I know.
Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, October 12th at 5:30 PM. This is a village board meeting and our first budget meeting. I'd like to call a meeting to order and request roll call, please.
Staten.
Here.
Udrow.
Here.
Carpenter.
Derek.
Molly.
Here.
Cool.
Here.
Grenier.
Here.
And Brett Howard.
Here.
Thank you. Item three, the village board may adjourn in a closed session during the meeting pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section 19.851E, to develop negotiate strategy for labor negotiations with the Wisconsin Professional Police Association. So we need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Udrow?
Yes.
Staten?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Brett Howard?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll go into closed session. We do need to stay in this room, so I would ask the people in the audience wait outside, please.
Need our clerk.
Okay. I'm sorry, Dan. We need our clerk back yet, so.
I think it's releasing probably one.
Yeah.
Companies do that all over. It's not just them.
They're gonna be out until six?
I thought it's gonna take longer than it is.
Yeah, I know.
I don't know.
Hold off on my end today.
Yeah. I said Lisa and Candy are near. Welcome back, everyone. We had a short closed session. We are back at item five, public appearances. Item A, discussion possible action regarding Lang family requesting the village pay for dumpster for the dismantling of the haunted house. Mr. Grace?
So Brandon Lang from the Lang family contacted me last week and was asking if the village board would consider covering the cost of a large dumpster to help them disassemble the haunted house. And I, you know, he actually asked me and Steve about it. I said, you know, the board have to approve that. It would cost about $460 from Pelletary. I talked to Pelletary today and, you know, they made, because obviously we have a contract with them, would think about cutting us a deal if the board wanted to do the, you know, the rental of the dumpster.
Yeah. So max of $450?
Max of, max of $460.
$460.
$460. It's typically $490, but on Mac we get a $30 discount through the village.
Did they say why they were requesting the village to pay for that?
Because they, because they're not raising any money, they don't have any cash to rent a dumpster because they're not having the event. So.
If we're gonna pay for that, what would fund would it come out of? How would we budget it?
Well, we, we have the money to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, easily.
Probably bring it out of the garbage or out of the refuse.
Well, that's true. We actually have, we actually have $1,200 in there that, that's true, Jeff. Good idea. We could charge, yeah, to get out of the refuse.
I understand why.
Pardon?
I just don't understand why that, you know, granted, I know the village shut them down because of permits and all that kind of thing and issues, but I don't understand why they, we should pay for a dumpster to help stop the weather.
That's why it's in front of you.
I don't get that, but that's.
Yeah.
I think they would say that, you know, they had it for several years and it went on and they thought they were, never thought about not being okay. Maybe shut them down and before they had a chance to make their money this year or something. Wanted me to pitch in and help out with this.
I guess I'd like to hear why it was shut down. I, you hear a lot of.
From zoning and building inspection issues.
Okay.
Yes, fire code violations, but the biggest thing was zoning did not allow it.
Yeah, okay.
And there was no way around it for us to say we could let you do it this year. It just, it couldn't happen.
Okay.
Because of zoning, so.
So it wasn't noticed in all the past years? Is that what?
Jerry, no offense, we should, we're past that. I don't wanna be rude here, but I think we should just talk about the dumpster, please.
All right.
I'm just gonna make a motion to that we get the dumpster for them.
I'll second it.
And I support that, too. I think it's a nice gesture. It was a community event and, and, you know, things didn't work out. It just seems like a nice gesture for us to do some things.
And it was a good cause that they were doing it for.
I'm hoping that Pelletary, you know, gives us a nice deal on it, too, so.
I think it would, I think it would go away to, perhaps to maybe mend some, some broken feelings.
Yeah.
Jerry, I just didn't want to go through all the.
No, I guess I'm, I'm out of the loop on this whole, I mean, I, there's an article in the local paper. That's all I really know. And I guess I'll be searching for details.
It was really, it was, it was really, no offense to the board, it was really a staff enforcement issue versus the board being involved.
Oh, I have no problem with what the staff did.
Yeah.
No, I'm totally on board with what the actions that were taken. I'm just trying to seek out some history.
Yeah, I'll give the history at some point.
Okay.
So I understand that everything that comes to the board is taken as, it stands on its own merit, but I can't help but think that sometimes people can make a justification for what they're asking for based on the way the board has decided in the past, because that would be logical to me. If I saw the board go one way in the past, it'd be logical for me to approach the board if I thought that my situation was similar to the situation that they had decided earlier. And so I wonder if there's, if there's ramifications or potential ramifications from us making the decision to spend taxpayer dollars to help fund the dismantling of a private haunted house, just simply based on the fact that they didn't know about the ordinances prior to this year that were in existence and on the books and as a result, weren't able to complete the fundraising.
You mean, I mean legal ramifications or policy or?
Legal ramifications, probably not so much, although, yeah, I'm concerned about that, but, but my assumption was you've already dotted your i's and crossed your t's there. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. So then now it's more that somebody else could approach the board and say, you know, I was requested to tear down this building. The building has been up for 20 years.
Yep.
For example, I didn't realize that it was out of code and I know that in the past the board has paid for materials to be hauled away, so I'd like the board to consider hauling away my materials. And then we inadvertently wind up in the middle of a situation like that.
I will tell you that maybe that very scenario didn't come up, but similar ones that have come up in the past and we've tried to work with property owners where the, you know, we've, the fireworks department has stepped in that, that particular situation to help the people out. So, yeah, absolutely, you can always go, somebody come back and say, hey, five years ago you did this for these guys, how about us? Sure, absolutely.
So, so what I'm hearing you say is that we historically have done what we could to help in situations similar to this?
Well, I'm, I'm not saying it was exactly that type of scenario, but, you know, we've, we've helped people out. I'll give you an example. Gary Dish is Mr. Service. Somebody forgets to put the garbage out one time and missed the garbage truck, Gary went and got the garbage for the person. I mean, we do stuff like that for people. Yeah. It's not exactly what you're talking about, but we do go outside the line sometimes to help people out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate you bringing that.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add, too, you know, we, we do champion civic causes from time to time. That costs the, the village taxpayers money. A good example is the youth center, I think. You know, that is a service to the village. I mean, I don't know how we justify, and how it's, how, if you don't like that service, I don't know how you justify that cost, but again, I think it's a good step in, in reducing helping youth in the community.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sure not everybody agrees with that, but, you know, again, this is a similar situation, I think. And again, it, it went on for a number of years and it's now found to have been illegal, basically, so.
Doug, did you have a comment?
No, I didn't do it.
Okay.
No, my thought, Jeff, I think precedents are set, but in my mind, it doesn't lock us in anything unless circumstances are exactly the same. So the time I've been on board, we look at each case as a new case as it comes forward. And what was happened in the past can provide perhaps some guidance, but it doesn't lock us in, so I'm fine with this.
The challenge is always, right, every time you throw a stone in the water, the ripples go out.
Yeah.
And trying to figure out where those ripples are going kind of helps to make the decision on whether we should throw the stone or not.
You hope the stone doesn't become a boulder.
Right. Yeah, so I appreciate the discussion. It was important.
Yeah. And I would say, too, that I talked to Brandon Lang, I think, on three occasions. He was very respectful, very understanding and basically said, I now understand that staff has to do their job and we can't do it. He handled it in a very adult way, especially for a young man who's still learning the ways of the world at his age. Did a good job.
Any further discussion? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to, for the village to pay for the dumpster for the Lang family. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, item B is community input. We have a time for anyone to address the board who would like to. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll go on to item six, which is approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight, amount of $799,455.15 for our consideration.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Questions?
I have one on the water tower.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you.
Oh, okay. 9037. And actually, it's an easy one.
Oh, shoot.
There's a $21,000 expenditure for the water tower on Lincoln Road.
Yes.
Is there any way we can get insurance for that? Is that eligible for any insurance?
Well, we have, we actually have, we asked for a one-year insurance on the repair of the materials and they sign that in the contract.
Okay.
But, but as far as insurance recovery, I don't, I don't think.
Is there any recovery?
You're talking about insurance recovery?
Both, actually.
Hey, I won't say no. You know, one could argue that it was faulty construction.
Right.
And.
Oh, no, I'm just, we have this, we're part of the, is that the state insurance fund?
Yes.
Is it eligible for recovery under that?
I don't think we even thought of that, Jerry, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I think what the claim would be. I could, I could have Peggy contact them if you want.
You know, just.
Yeah, sure.
You know.
You ever know.
We don't ask, I know what we're gonna get.
Yep.
Thanks, Jerry. Any other questions? So we have a motion and a second to approve vouchers in the amount of $799,455.15. Roll call, please.
Grenier?
Yes.
Udrow?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Brett Howard?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Staten?
Yes, that motion carries. We'll go to item seven, which is the 2016 budget overview and proposed tax levy, and this starts us into our budget notebook and also a review of the general fund revenues. So, Mr. Grace?
So I'm gonna be referring to the tab overview in your book. I'm not gonna read this to you, but as I know you've read it already, I just wanted to do a little quick overview here, overview of the overview, so to speak. So this is my proposed 2016 budget. I wanted to thank the department heads, particularly Lisa, as I always do, for helping work on it. We look forward to adopting the 2016 budget with the board. Upcoming meetings are the 19th and the 21st. 21st will be our annual joint meeting with park board. On this sheet here that, that was in front of you, you'll see that, hold it up here. There's a projected $39 increase for an average house if the budget was adopted tonight. And as I noted in, I put in an email to the board last week, I'd ask you not to really focus on this right now because we actually don't even have the final assessed value from the state, so once we get that, that, this will change. Lisa and I want to spend some time talking to the board about debt service. For example, if you look in this column here where it says $900,000, that's the projected levy that we would be going into Fund 307, which is debt service. If you just, if the board decided to use more impact fees, for example, another $40,000 to bring the levy down, that $39 would go under $30 per house. So there's a lot we have to talk to the board about in the next couple of weeks and probably actually even into November before we actually make a final recommendation on a, on a tax rate and levy with the board, so. We're seeing the average va, value of a house went from 220 to 225 in 2015. Total general fund revenues and expenditures are increasing 2.41%. A small decrease in share revenue, but this budget will be eligible for expenditure restraint payment of about $36,000, which helps. The biggest issue that happened to us, and this happened last week, I think Monday, was we received the notice from the, the state that they decreased our highway almost, almost $50,000. They decreased it $46,000, which was the max they could decrease. So we're gonna actually look into that, make sure that the calculation is right. We have until November 14 to check on it, but that was a real shocker for us, almost $50,000 in general fund, so. We are, we expect the recycling grant to go down a couple thousand dollars next year. And as Jerry was talking about, the youth center, our, this budget continues to provide free rent to the youth center and a village cash payment of $9,000. We tried to identify some of the major impacts on why the levy is going up next year. We are gonna be having two new fire, fire positions in 2016. One's, one's already in, in 2015, but next year, the 2016 budget will be covering it versus this year when we, when we added the position, we're using fund bounds for the fire district. The village's share of the district increased a little bit, and then also the budget includes a full year of funding for the full-time fire chief. We're gonna have four elections next year, which is an approximate increase of $25,000 in the budget. The other thing, other thing we have to talk about with the board would be our bill inspection. We're using independent inspections after our bill inspector resigned. And it's, some of the fees are obviously being offset by, by billing permit fees, but, but our payments to them have gone up a lot compared to when we're using on staff. So we want to talk to the board about this, not just during the budget meeting, but over the next couple of months as we go into 2016. We had a new senior center employee take family health insurance, which meant that the senior center budget went up about $10,000. And then the biggest thing that's hitting the levy is debt service, which we're, we'll spend some time talking about, and I can refer you back to that sheet we were just talking about. Health insurance, the percentage that the village will pay is staying the same for 2016. And we do have a proposed budget, or I'm sorry, a proposed $10,000 in the budget for beginning the salary study with a consultant next year. As far as street improvements, we're increasing crack filling from $15,000 to $20,000, chip ceiling from $30,000 to $40,000, and we're anticipating doing reconstruction of Elm Street, South Main and North Baroque. At this point, the Highway CC joint project with the county is not in the budget, but Jeff and I are saying that I think if that happens, we'll probably end up doing North Baroque and Jefferson Street with the county and bump Elm Street and South Main Street till 2017. There's only, there's only so many streets you can do in one year and do them right, so. We have the money to relocate, relocate the composting site for the extension on North Prairie Parkway, and we continue to have engineering in the budget for the extension of Prairie Parkway, which we anticipate doing in 2017. As far as capital equipment highlights, we are proposing to do the, on officer cameras. The jet vac, now that's been in the budget probably three or four years, I think we're proposing to actually go ahead with that next year. Replace a lawnmower, or actually the tractor, in the Parks Department. And then we're looking at, Mark, when Mark was here, we had gotten a proposal from Otis to do some significant work on the elevator in the village hall. We're not sure that we should do that, but we want to talk to the board about that. And also, we need to replace our server, about $30,000, so we'll be talking about that as well. The proposed budget includes funding to create a new pers, or create a personnel coordinated position in the fourth quarter of 2016. As I note, I'm still working on the details of how we would do that and how it would impact village operations, but some board members have been around for a while. We tried doing this a few years ago. We really need to create the position, so we're trying to figure out how to do that and fit it into the budget. So that'll be coming forward to the board shortly as well. As in the past, several repair and maintenance line items were increased because the village buildings and equipment are getting older and need more maintenance. This budget continues the practice that we started since '04 of not using fund balance, and this has been one of the main reasons for the village's good credit rating, that we're not using, we're not doing the called deficit spending to, to balance our budget. So that's kind of a short overview. And are there any questions about this sheet, the levy we're, right now at this point? So Lisa's gonna go through the general fund revenues. If you're gonna do that.
So as Mike mentioned, we do have some final numbers for some of our revenue items, but not everything yet, so some of them are estimates that are in there. Like the taxes, for instance, the fee in lieu of taxes for rolling metals and Genesis housing, those are just estimates at this point. And then as we go down to the intergovernmental revenues, the only ones that we know for sure is the state share revenue. That's a set amount already. The expenditure restraint amount we'll be receiving at the end of this month. The highway aids, as we mentioned, that's, that's a set amount, and that was the $46,000 drop from last year to this year, from 15 to 16. The amount from, for the library Dane County, that's a set amount. And then the senior center Dane County, that's a set amount. That's an amount that we've already received, so we know that those are all, that's what we're gonna be receiving for those revenues. The other ones are still up in the air because they're, we don't have the final numbers for like the recycling grant. That number's not posted yet. Then as we go on to licenses and permits.
Can I ask you a quick question that'll help me understand these numbers?
Sure.
So there's a column called department budget beside the current year projected?
Correct.
And then there's a column next to that called admin budget?
Right.
Can you remind me the difference between those two?
Sure. The department budget is what the department head had proposed. The admin budget is Mike's budget, what he's proposing. And a lot of them are, are fairly similar. There weren't a lot of adjustments made. As we got better numbers in, we made the changes in the admin column, like for instance, we received the health insurance. So those changes were done in the admin column because we have the actual numbers for health insurance now. But that's just the difference. One is what the department had proposed and the admin is Mike's proposal.
Thank you.
So licenses and permits. I mean, those are just all our best guess at this point. Building, from building permits down, we're kind of estimating, guesstimating that the number of new residential homes could potentially be about the same as this year. That doesn't include all the duplexes and the fourplexes, but we're thinking the residential homes should be pretty close to the same that we had this year, based on the number of lots available in the community. Fines and forfeitures, most of those were brought forward by the department heads. Not a lot of change there. Purchases for services. If anybody has any questions, just let me know as we go through these. Purchases for services, that's just a guesstimate of what we could potentially take in, for instance, for the library fines. These are our best guess at this point, based on past history. And the same thing for, and then we get down to intergovernmental revenues, and if you notice, the PD services for the town of Oregon, that's a zero because we no longer contract with the town of Oregon. In inspection services, we no longer contract with the town of Oregon for our inspection services either, when we had our in-house inspector. So that's why you see zeros in those two, in those two rows. Everything else is pretty status quo. Miscellaneous revenues, pretty much the same as the year before. And then the general transfer, and just a reminder, that's the pilot program, which is a payment in lieu of taxes, and that's the money that the water department, there's a calculation done when we done, when we do the PSN report at the end of, or not PSN, the Public Service Commission report at the end of the year. It's an annual report that we do. That's all part of the audit process. And then there's a calculation that's done to see how much the water department pays the village. It's a payment in lieu of taxes. So that's just a reminder that that's for, and then we also have in there for $3,500 from the cable TV, and that's to offset the expenses of the cable TV that we have here at Public Works, down at the police department. And I think that's it, yeah, just those three spots. So is there any questions about any of the other revenues that I didn't touch on?
The highway aids, that's not by formula, is it?
It's, it's a formula.
It is.
Yeah. That's the one that Mike mentioned that we're gonna check to make sure the formula is correct, that their, that their, the formula's probably correct, but to make sure that they've got the right numbers in there for the calculation. So from what it looks like when we received it, based on the amount that we received in 15, was it 90%? It couldn't go below 90% of the previous year, and they actually maxed it out to that 90% of a.
Down to the dollar.
Yeah. As a reduction.
Yeah, 90%. Yep. Yeah, I mean, we know that, we actually have the formula. The formula is right. We just have to make sure that they're using the right numbers, so we're gonna look into that.
Any other questions?
And then actually, the highway aids, that's a preliminary number, though, isn't it? If I remember right now?
Preliminary.
That's a preliminary number, but it typically doesn't change much when we get the final.
Unless, yeah, maybe a couple of dollars, but.
Yeah.
Lisa, senior center case management went from a little over $5,000 to zero? Is that because there's no case management outside of the village?
It, it depends on, I think that comes from the county, right, the case management payments.
Right, and I don't think we have anybody in that right now, so if we have nobody in the program, we don't receive any revenue from the county for that.
Thank you.
Potentially, there could be somebody throughout the year, but right now, we don't have anybody.
Yeah.
So we really can't count on that income.
Yeah, okay. Questions or comments, anyone? Want Lisa to present it?
Just one comment.
Sure.
Now, does the village own both the senior center and the library?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
And they have to pay rent?
No.
No. No.
That we do take care of all that.
Yes.
Yeah, we cover all their expenses.
And all the, anything that has to be done there in those buildings?
Well, they're, they have their own budgets, but it's, they're in the, most of their money is in the general fund, in the senior center budget and the library budget.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I'm, I'm gonna double check, yeah.
And they have operating revenues that come out from outside of the tax base, like from the county?
Right. That's on page, actually, I guess on the very first, yeah, very first page. On page one at the bottom, library Dane County and senior center Dane County. I think those are estimates at this point.
The senior center, what is the number? Those are those sheets she gave us?
That's right.
So that is the number for the senior center. And the library is not a 100% sure number, as long as it comes in close to last year, it should be, it should be relatively close on that one.
And is this the number that's gonna be impacted when the village goes over 10,000 thousand residents, potentially, that that number would increase as long as other metrics were met?
The Dane County money is for reimbursement of use of library materials. And so that check comes in every year and was divided in half. Part of it goes for operations, which covers staffing, and the other part goes for facilities, what we've been using for updating the lighting and, you know, carpet cleaning and maintaining the building. So when it reaches ten thousand, hopefully, it will increase.
Any other questions? Thanks, Lisa, I appreciate that. So we're ready for item eight, Mike?
We are.
Okay. Item eight is fire EMS protection and EMS budgets, discussion possible approval. And this begins on page thirty-nine in our packet with explanation from our chief also. Robert, chief?
I have to say overly bang here. Well, it's four months now, it seems to increase rather rapidly. But I want to thank Mike and Lisa for helping. I was over bothering them quite a bit, asking questions. But I think that we were able to put together a real good product here. It's a little different than what you've had in the past, I believe. I won't go over it too much, just kind of in the beginning, but it kind of lays out what we're all about over at the district in the beginning of it, our mission, kind of the different activities that each division performs for us as you go through it, and then our accomplishments in two thousand and fifteen. I like to list those too. And then in two thousand and sixteen, some of the goals for the department that we've laid out. I'll pause there if anybody does have any questions on any of that information that was provided.
Nicely done, thank you.
And then we move into the part that I'm sure everybody's concerned about being the major increases and decreases in the budget for two thousand and sixteen. Happy to talk about the fact that we're within budget right now. We do have some overtures in certain line items, but we believe that the other spots that we aren't surplus in at this time will make up for those. So that's looking real good at this time. The, we have a, you'll see as you look at it, Mike had talked about the adding the extra firefighter, that he said two firefighters, which I wanted to just put that in there. Essentially, it's just one, because we've already hired one. We hired a firefighter in June, or excuse me, August, and we were able to pay for that out of some of the fund balance and some of the savings that we've had out of the part-time expenditures that were allocated. So it's, it's really, we're adding two because it's never been budgeted before, but one's already working. And we were able to lower the line item for paid-on-call, a hundred thousand dollars. We figure we will save. So essentially, we're hiring two people for about forty thousand dollars. And the reason that I feel this is important to do, when I started here in June, we had five members working at the department. And what we were doing is we're fortunate to have interns that are a big part of our department. We have nine interns and three on each shift, so we always have five people at the department. Interns go to school during the day, so that causes us some issues during the day, but usually we're able to make up for that with our paid-on-call people who are on pages around the village. But one of the biggest things I had heard when I first started here is, you know, how many, how many full-time people are going on ambulance calls? Is it just the interns that are going on ambulance calls? And I want to be careful how I say this, because these kids are eighteen, nineteen, twenty years old, and they're sharp kids. I mean, when I first came here, I was amazed at how sharp these guys are. But being out in the field and witnessing some of the things that we witness and being in a classroom are two different things. And at eighteen, nineteen, twenty years old, I know when I was that age, my parents trusted me with the riding lawnmower, and I don't know if they should have. And we're trusting, we're trusting them with fire trucks and ambulances that are, you know, half a million dollars, quarter million dollar machines. And, you know, the equipment isn't the big thing, but it's, you know, people's lives and the service that we provide, which, like I said, they're sharp kids, but at two o'clock in the morning, when you're at a bad car accident and family members are screaming at you, and because they want you to do this, they want you to do that, you know, that's, that's stuff that you don't prepare for in the classroom. You know, when you go to somebody's house and they hand you their baby and say, here, you know, and the baby's blue, and I hate to be dramatic, but you know, those are real things that happen. And at eighteen, nineteen, twenty years old, you're just not prepared for that type of stuff. You're not, you know? At thirty years old, that's tough, but the experience that you've gained during that time is crucial for making those types of decisions. And we can't sit back and, and realize everything that's going to happen, but that experience is paramount, and it makes such a huge difference when you go on these calls. And I just don't think it's fair to those kids, I don't think it's fair to those citizens, to, to just have, you know, two people out there that are fresh like that, even though they're sharp. And like I said, I'm still impressed with what they can do, but you just can't duplicate experience. And we'll be able to provide that now. We'll always have one full-time member on at all times. And by having the six, there'll be two on each, we have an A-shift, a B-shift, and a C-shift, so there'll be two members on each shift. Somebody takes vacation, the seventh person then will fill in for those spots. And there's always vacation, sick time, holidays, whatever would happen to come up. So that'll put us in pretty good shape, I believe, moving forward. I think it'll address some concerns that I've heard, you know? Like I said, I think our guys do an excellent job. I mean, I'm still amazed at the things that I see, but I just want to make sure that they're provided every opportunity to succeed, and I think this will do that, and that's why we have it in the budget. Any questions on that?
Chief, thanks. I had a question, but I think you've answered it, but I'll just reiterate it, because it is an important part of your budget. I was going to ask you what the taxpayers get for the additional money that's going to be spent in this budget. I think it's a little over twenty-eight thousand.
Correct. Well, it's about four point, I like to say a modest four-point-five percent increase here.
Yeah, right. And what I'm hearing, what I heard in your overview, is that the residents are going to have a safer, safer operation.
I believe so, just not only from our operational standpoint in providing life, life safety services, but also in doing fire inspections, fire prevention education. There's numerous things as you go through our accomplishments for two thousand and fifteen, and as I'll present in the annual report, that you'll see that these guys, the days of sitting at the fire station, playing ping pong or playing pool are long gone. And especially in a vibrant, growing community like this, I think it's extremely important that we provide, you know, whatever, do whatever we can to provide that service to the people. And I truly believe, or I want to put this before you, that that's what we're doing.
Well, thank you. The other question I had, and this is probably because of the fact I've been around a while, I can remember the days when volunteers comprised about the lion's share of any fire operation. That's not the case anymore. Can you give me a brief overview of why that happened or how it happened?
Yeah, I was, I'll be happy to do that, actually, and this is, it's a problem everywhere. It's not just a problem in Oregon. I think it's just a product of our time, is what it is. It's, I guess, I just found out not too long ago at a convention that millennials, I guess I'm not considered a millennial yet, but that's, you know, there's the baby boomers and, and each age group as you go through. And now the millennials, they all have young families, a lot like we did, but they just, I say we, I guess I'm kind of stuck in the middle, but like the older generation did, but they just don't have the time. And what's expected out of these EMS and fire personnel, the amount of time they work, most people now eight, ten hours, you know, eight is probably a thing of the past, probably ten dollars a day now with their travel time. And then we expect them to go to school probably for about six months to get their EMS license, and that happens on a Tuesday or Thursday, Monday or Wednesday, three hours a night. And they just don't have the time. Same with the fire side of things. We can get people that want to come down and help, but they don't have the time to get all the certifications. You're looking at probably nowadays about twelve hundred hours, don't hold me to that, for EMS, and another two to three hundred for fire, just to get yourself at the entry level. And the people just aren't out there. We just did a drive for volunteers. We had six applications. We have two hopefuls, and we'll go through that, and that's pretty good usually. And it's just, people say, hey, I'm worked all day, I just don't have the time. I'd be more willing just to come down and help, but the technology's changed. If you look at today's buildings, they're not made out of just wood anymore. They're made out of these materials that burn quicker, faster, these plastics, these polys, all these different types of materials, these high-tech materials that are in buildings. Takes a lot more people to fight fires aggressively with those types of building materials. There are just numerous different things that, in today's world, that have changed, and I think that's the reason for it. I'm hoping that we have the magic potion here, but it's, it hasn't been easy anywhere else in the state or around the nation, for that matter. But I'm not, you know, I'm not sitting here advocating that we need to hire another three next year or anything. I just think it's important for us to get a baseline, and then as we grow, see where we can go from there.
Sounds like a good plan. The final thing I have is, I used to be on the fire commission, I think it's a commission. And as part of that, I used to get a monthly, I used to meet monthly, I used to get a monthly report from the chief. Would it be possible to give Mike a copy of that to share with this board?
I would love to. We've actually developed a report now that I believe is pretty comprehensive. Mr. Drola could tell you, he's on the board, and it lists everything. I hope to have it on the Facebook page.
Okay.
Or not the Facebook page, excuse me. I'm new to all this technology. The, we're going to have a website for the fire department, and I've been working with the girls upstairs and possibly putting that on there. But I don't see any reason why I can't, at least, when I send that to you or send that over to Mike.
Sure.
Either one of us.
I know Mike is asked in the past about it too, so.
That way, if the residents ask about, you know, what's going on in the fire department, we'll be able to.
Absolutely, there's, it's always full. I think there's a lot going on.
Well, thank you for your efforts.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions about that full-time employee? Another big expenditure that we're going to have is we're adding physicals for all of our members each year. And that's a COM-30 requirement, COM-30, I know what you said, but it's a state requirement. Not a lot of departments do it, you know, you're not held to that standard. But one of the big things that I believe it brings to is it's just a basic physical, where a person will get their cholesterol checked. They're over certain ages, they get other tests done. Costs about two fifty to three hundred dollars. And what it does is it picks up, maybe somebody has diabetes, somebody that has a blockage, so it prevents them from having a severe episode when they're on a fire, you know, fire scene or a fire incident, and causing us even more issues down the road. And I think it just provides a good service to our employees. It shows that we care, it shows that we want them to be healthy, and we want to know that they can do the job. And I think it's a small price to pay, especially in the business that we're in, to make sure that everybody's in the health that they need to be to provide those services. And then in the capital request, you'll see him asking for two hundred thousand.
Can I ask a quick question about that last bullet point? Anytime that we talk about doing things for the employees, usually there's a conversation about the union. Is there any concerns that doing this?
Nope, this is something that we're providing and we're paying for, so it's not anything that would have to be bargained. The capital request would be for two hundred thousand dollars for a new ambulance to replace the.
Oh, I interrupted you at the new ambulance. I interrupted you when you were getting ready to introduce the new ambulance that's been requested will allow the department.
Okay, so what I'm asking for there is to replace the nineteen ninety-eight ambulance that we have, and we'll be requesting two hundred thousand dollars to do that. We're still working on that, Lisa, correct? And maybe you can help us out a little bit better with what we're thinking there.
Well, I think what we've kind of thrown around is that probably part of the purchase will be funded through fund balance, as long as we stay above our, our fund balance policy. And then probably the rest of it we'll probably have to borrow for. But two thousand and sixteen is the last year for the town of Dunn payment, so that'll be dropping off. And if we do a borrowing in two thousand and sixteen, our first principal payment, principal and interest payment wouldn't be till sixteen, so it would kind of replace the town of Dunn payment that's dropping off for everybody in sixteen.
So town of Dunn took out a loan on behalf of the district five, five years ago for equipment, and that's, that's what Lisa's getting at, so.
Okay.
So basically, the expense of wash?
Pretty much, it should, yeah. Depending on how we, it could even actually be less, depending on how much of the fund balance the commission wants to use towards the purchase. You know, two hundred thousand, I would think it would be probably a five-year borrowing. So if you do half of that, I mean, just, I think our portion of the, for the town of Dunn borrowing is like twenty thousand dollars. So this will actually probably end up, even if we were to borrow the entire amount, would probably end up being less than the amount of the payment that we're making right now for the town of Dunn.
And the reason I ask, Lisa, is because that was something that's still being discussed, so I don't want to jump ahead and present something that may not be the case at this time. So it's been approved, it's just more or less a financing issue, but I'm very hopeful that it will go through.
And without stealing your thunder, I want to thank you for bringing this to the board and for bringing this to this budget, and I want to thank you for what you're about to do as well in terms of introducing your depreciation schedule for the trucks. And just to remind the board that for the last ten years or so, we've really, really been tightening the belt, and as a result of that, they've been squeezing every last mile that they could out of the vehicles that we've got at the fire department. And, and it's just time for us to think differently about that, because the usable life for a lot of those vehicles isn't nearing the end. It passed that stage five or six years ago. So a big, a big credit to the fire department for maximizing by repairing the life of the vehicles, and I appreciate you bringing, bringing and keeping this in front of the board to make sure that we've got vehicles that are going to get the job done when our residents have a need.
Absolutely. I'm not one of those types of individuals that will come before you and say, we have to have this, we have to have that, without being able to justify it. And, you know, we're doing about, it looks like thirteen hundred calls this year, of which probably eighty-five to ninety percent will be EMS-related. And it's just, it's a tool that we need to do our job. And that's, it's one of those costs of doing business. You know, it's a large price tag that's associated with that, but there's also revenue that's generated from that. And I hate to say that, because I hate to look at anybody's emergency as a revenue generator, but it is just a fact, and it's something that we need to have in order to continue to provide the high-level service that we do provide. And then you'll see also that I was able to lower the vehicle repair line item. I figured by what seventeen thousand dollars just in repairs alone, we've had radiators and other things start to go out of the ambulances that we have, the ambulance that we're replacing, and it, it's just time. And I think that we can be fiscally responsible in other areas too by providing a new ambulance. So we've made those adjustments. Then as you turn the page, this is, is something that I begged Mike and Lisa for. I, we combined everything this year, so next year, it'll all be one line item, so it's all on this page. You used to see fire, EMS, and building inspection, the building maintenance division. Now it's all one, so I think it's a lot easier. A lot of the line items were all duplicated, so it was a number game. You know, that's what you would do. If you had to pay the insurance, well, you'd take the insurance out of the EMS side of things. And the next month, you'd take it out of the fire side of things. And then in the past, maybe they used all the fire insurance, so that was at a deficit, but the EMS side of things was at a plus of fifteen thousand dollars. So I think it's just going to be a lot easier to combine everything, put it in this type of format, and show it to you as we go forward. If it's something that isn't popular or people don't like, I'm happy to change back, but I truly believe that this will make things a lot easier as we move forward. And I'll just hit on a few of those areas that I had talked about. As you see at the top.
Well, real quick, just to reinforce what you just said, the fire commission actually asked for this as well. We review the, the financials every month, and it gets really hard to try to, to try to true everything up. To the chief's point, when you see that the fire's at a deficit of six thousand, but you haven't yet got over to the EMS side to see that it's at a plus of six thousand, that we're at a net zero. So if you do not like the way this looks, I think the commission's going to want to talk to you about it as well.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I think it's a lot easier. I'm a big believer in making things simpler if we can, and I think we've done that, and everything is still where it needs to be. The goal is at least a three-line items change, and I think we just added them as additional line items, but everything else was identical. So that's exactly what we have here. You see operations salaries at the top, obviously, the hundred and seventeen thousand dollars is a product of those two employees that we're looking at putting on, the one being here already. The volunteer reimbursement, that minus ninety-nine thousand, that's what we're looking at saving. So it's almost a wash when you look at that, and there's a seventeen thousand dollar difference there. But that's, that's what we're doing, and we're putting two people on that are career people when we lower that item. So I think it's a huge improvement for a little, a little bit of cost. The other incidentals that are above that, the health insurance, the retirement, those types of things are uncontrollables, that are, those are just products of whatever happens each year. As we move down, you'll see towards the bottom, fire repair, maintenance, minus seven thousand, the vehicle repair, minus seventeen thousand. We're able to save almost essentially twenty-four thousand dollars there. We were able to save about twenty-five hundred dollars in the insurance, we believe. This year, we also saved another twenty-four hundred, excuse me, I mentioned that. As I move down, another three thousand dollars in repairs and maintenance in building, and another eight thousand dollars in the insurance.
So a quick question about truck insurance, if I could?
Sure.
If we replace the ambulance with a new ambulance, does that change the premium?
It'll change it a little bit, but it isn't going to be anything that's going to jump off the charts. The reason that we were able to make those changes is we shopped the insurance... the charts. The reason that we were able to make those changes is we shopped the insurance quotes around a bit instead of just saying, "Okay, we'll pay this." And that's how we were able to make that savings. And I believe that, you know, that it's possible that there could even be more savings there yet. But that'll take some time as we move forward to explore those options. So I've talked rather quick there as we move through here. But if anybody does have any questions, please interrupt. So that kinda, it kinda shows you where we're at. I mean, if you look at everything there, you know, we're looking at an increase of about $50,000 on the fire department. And, you know, I, I feel fairly confident that, that that's a good number for what we're able to get out of this budget. And I know nobody likes to ever see increases, but I think they're all warranted. I think they're all justified. And I think as I, as I put this before you, there isn't any questions to why.
Are there questions?
I just have a follow-up question on the monthly reports, Jack, that we're gonna receive.
Yes, sir.
Part of those reports, does it include the activity, you know, where's the number of EMS calls, number of fire calls?
Absolutely. Yeah. It includes all of the information.
Okay.
I wish I had one with me, Jerry. I usually do, but I brought a little bigger folder with me today.
I'll check out the next one you sent.
But, yeah, absolutely. And everything, it lists the calls that we go on. It's specific to the type of calls that we go on. So it'll say EMS calls. It'll list the fire calls. It'll list the accidents. It'll list gas, CO calls, any type of incident we go on, false alarms. I believe, what is there, Jeff? Excuse me, probably about eight or nine different categories that that falls in. And then it also tells you any type of expenditures that we've had for the month that are significant expenditures. All the events, all the different things that the firefighters have attended and are doing.
Okay. All right. That sounds perfect. Thank you.
And all the training too that goes on.
Okay.
Anything else from trustees?
A quick question, Chief, about the vehicle replacement schedule that you built. I just wanna bring everybody's attention to it. I wanna thank you for it because we've been asking for it. And I noticed that, you know, not only are there a few past due items, but there's a few items that are coming up pretty quickly.
Yeah. I was, I was going there next, actually. And that's the last thing I have listed here. There are some zeros on here. And as I had said earlier, that doesn't mean that we need to go run out and do a bunch of it. No, we need to have three brand-new fancy fire trucks or anything like that. I've only been here four months, still evaluating what we use, how we use it. Maybe, you know, as we move down the road, there might be some opportunity to combine vehicles or use a vehicle for more than one purpose. So what we do have, I mean, the ambulances are definitely a concern. And that's why I have those presented before you and I'm asking for one this year. But in terms of the other equipment that we have, as you look at this list, the Squad Six is our, is our rescue vehicle. We still have 10 years left on that. The water tender does have zero years on it. It's in relatively good shape, though. It's a vehicle that's only used, from what I understand, three to four times a year. So I don't know if it necessarily means that we need to go out and buy one right away. But it is something that definitely needs to be looked at. When you turn the page, around the bottom, you see Engine One there. That's our frontline engine. That still has 10 years on it. When you turn the page, you'll see our Brush Nine that has zero years on it. But we also have another brush vehicle that is, I believe, capable of replacing that truck. And so it, it looks like that is something that, even though it says zero, we could still use it. It's a 1988. I don't think it's probably worth a whole lot selling it. So it's probably worth more to us to keep in-house and use it as-is. But I don't necessarily think that we need to replace that at this time. Engine Three, that's our backline engine. That still has five years left on it. But it is a backline engine. So we're not in a, you know, when I look at the status of where we're at here with our equipment, I think that, you know, the, the board and the village and the district have done a pretty good job providing us with good equipment. And there's gonna come a time, though, where these are things that are gonna have to be looked at. And it's gonna have to be decided, do we wanna set money aside each year? Do we wanna borrow for these types of purchases? What do we wanna do? Because when it does happen, you're looking at, it says zero all of a sudden. And it happens quick. Those years go away before you know it. And then you have a $300,000, $400,000 expenditure. That's just on an average, maybe $500,000, $600,000. So, you know, I've always liked to be able to know, what type of plan do we wanna have moving forward? And that's something we talked about a little bit at the commission. And maybe we can discuss further. Said, do we wanna set money aside each year? Or do we wanna borrow for those purchases or take it out of the fund balance? Or what do we wanna do? And, and that's something that I'll leave up to those people to make that decision. But I think the information is here. And, and I'll be more than happy, as time progresses, to express my concerns before the number gets to zero.
So one thing that you could do that would help me, Chief, is if you could take a look at your budget and put together a budget that you would propose if we were going to set money aside.
Okay. I, I don't have any problem doing that, just as long as I know that that's what we're, so what you're asking for then is line items of all the equipment and everything that we use. And then put a dollar value associated with that each year with its life expectancy?
Well, so maybe not in that much detail. But like every budget, your budget balances to zero. So if you were going to create a separate line item called revenue that's being put into savings for future purchase, future capital purchase, where would that come from?
Well, what I would do is allocate a certain percentage towards those purchases. Like, let's say, a fire engine on here costs $500,000. So then I would hope that we could possibly, and the life expectancy is, let's say, 10 years for easy math. I would hope that what we could do is set aside $50,000 each year. And then once that life expectancy was up, we would have the $500,000 for that engine.
So would that be an increased revenue request from the various different villages and towns? Or would you take existing revenue and find a way to reduce expenses?
Well, that's, that's a question for those people that make that decision. I can put that before you, but I think that's a little bit above my authority in making that type of decision. I think that would come from each town or each member that's part of the district.
Just to remember, it's, you can raise your levy for debt service. But when you try to do something like that, everyone's working underneath a cap. It's harder to do now.
So that would come at your, that would come at the adminis, at the administration?
Well, I mean, it, it's, when we have our, you know, that's a great question to ask when we have our joint meetings, how to do it. I mean, there, there's a thought that if you're gonna borrow something for 10 years and those people are gonna be using it for 10 years, you know, the people in the district, that should, that should, you know, they should be paying for that versus collecting money for 10 years over here, buying the truck. Now you've taxed these people for a brand-new truck that may not be using it. So there's a different philosophy on how to do it. But I will tell you, it's easier to, not easier, but because of the property tax cap.
Yeah.
You can borrow versus the towns and the village raising its levy for, in a sense, would be operations.
Which, you know, we talk a lot about borrowing here. And I, and I'm sensitive to the fact that we have an entire village watching us via cable access. And from the citizen's perspective, if all we do is just keep borrowing and borrowing and borrowing, you know, like as a resident, you, you would think to yourself, there's gonna come a point where I can't afford my payments and that's irresponsible, et cetera. But we're talking about borrowing in a different way. And, and it's, it's been eye-opening for me to think about borrowing in this way. And I hope that the village also gets educated along the way as to what we mean when we talk about borrowing.
Well, I-
And why that's fiscally responsible and not fiscally irresponsible.
The towns, towns have a history of having a depreciation schedule, which is, you know, they're gonna buy something for $50,000. They put money aside every, every year. Typically, village and cities don't usually do that. It's just different philosophies. But I mean, maybe the, maybe the compromise is that if a piece of equipment's under this type of value, then you put money aside. But if you're gonna buy a truck for, was it $600,000 or $500,000, I mean, I'm not sure it makes sense to try to be salting money away. I, I just-
Yeah.
And then you'd be taxing people for 10 or 15 years by the truck. I mean, it, it's just, you know, it just seems-
And there's different philosophies on how you do that.
Yeah. Right.
By no means am I suggesting one or another. That's kinda why I just said that those will be for-
We should bring up the joint meeting. The joint meeting should talk about it, yeah.
And I should clarify too, that was just for easy math. A fire engine's life expectancy's about 20 to 25 years. So I don't want anybody to think that we're gonna have any major concerns there. But just so I could keep it simple off the cuff.
And the purchase is probably more like a million dollars than, than $600,000, too.
Well, you know, you can get into a whole different ballgame there. You know, does a brand-new vehicle necessarily need to be purchased either? You know, there's, you know, there's a bunch of different things that could happen as you kind of approach those types of things when they come up. The biggest thing, though, like I said, is that ambulance. And an ambulance is usually good for 10 years, especially if you're doing about 1,200, 1,300 calls. And just 'cause NFA says 10 years, you know, maybe we could get 11 or 12. Maybe it'll be eight or nine. You never know. But I think the way we, I have it set up here is the best way to do it right now is we could be on a, the scale would be every five years if we placed an ambulance. And there'd still be a life expectancy of 10 years, but now we would be on a schedule of every five and rotating them. And I think that's the best way to do it instead of all of a sudden being hit with two expenditures at one time for the ambulance portion, which is, you know, 85 to, 80 to 85% of what we do. It's just the reality of things.
Would that be borrowed for or would that be just in the capital budget then?
Well, Doug, that, that's the million-dollar question, I guess. But, I mean, ideally, from what I've kinda heard in the four months that I've been here, it would be nice that it could come out of the fund, the fund balance due to the revenue that was created. So it would be self-sufficient and there wouldn't have to be any taxes or any types of increases. And I'm not sure that can happen. But that's something that definitely has to be looked at. I don't wanna speak out of place on that either. But I know that that's what, from what I've kinda, the feeling that I've got, that's what they would like to see, I believe, if I'm correct, Jeff?
Yeah. I think what you're saying is reasonable, you know? And this is an open discussion. You're the chief of the department and you've got a lot of really valuable insights. And plus, you come from another department that's similar in size. So you've got some experience as to how that department did things too. So I think the things that you're seeing are very important and very relevant. I appreciate your openness.
I know we had to buy two ambulances at one time in O'Connell and, and that was tough to absorb. And they borrowed to do it. But that was because it went and went and went. And then there was all of a sudden, it was, both ambulances were 14 years old and the wheels had fallen off them. So, you know, that, I, I don't wanna be caught in that type of situation. I would rather be able to plan for it because we know it's something that's gonna happen. It's not a matter of, of if, it's when.
Other questions from trustees? Do you think, staff?
Nope.
So thanks for the report. It was clear and understandable and thorough. I appreciate that, Jeff.
Yeah. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. If anybody ever has any questions, don't be afraid to stop in.
Now we'll see if we approve it.
What's that? Okay. I'll hope for the best.
That made Brian nervous. Okay. So we need a motion to approve the fire EMS budgets as just presented to us?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All set? Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay. So we go to item nine, which is the police department budget. Item A, email from Chief Yule regarding police department's involvement and support for the breast cancer awareness month.
So these, so these items are in your packet?
Back to the front?
Yep.
Except for the last one, Chief.
I don't have that memo in front of me that I prepared. But just to let you know that we are, as an agency promoting breast cancer awareness month, it's a cause that's kinda near and dear to me. Of course, it is my, my wife has been diagnosed. But we, we just wanna make sure that we promote this. You know, there's not a person that anyone knows that hasn't been affected by some form of cancer or another. So I thought it was important for the police department to, to bring about that awareness and maybe, you know, shed some light on the issues that, that are, that are there and support it in a small amount. You know, t-shirts, that type of thing that we can do. I partnered with the school as well to, to design a t-shirt and, and work on some pink-out activities. I think I heard a stat one time that every 88 seconds, a woman is diagnosed with breast cancer or something like that. So a pretty important cause. So I just wanna make sure that we, we bring around that awareness.
Good. And thanks for your leadership on this.
Sure.
Item B, from the special October 5th Personnel, Public Safety and Protection Committee. The committee approved this three to nothing to approve the police department's request to keep the generator that had been declared surplus. Some that new chief came on board and felt is worth keeping, right?
Well, yeah. And, you know, I think there was a little bit of miscommunication on that. I had information that it was purchased through the Explorer program. There was some information that it was purchased through the 1033 program. Well, Rudy talked to me today and said that actually it was purchased through our budget, through someone that was selling it for a significant amount back in 2013 for $2,800. So this is an item that we'd like to retain. It's something that can be used at Summer Fest, other events that we put on. So I'd hate to actually lose this and then have to go out and try to find it later on. Thanks, Rudy.
So we need a motion?
A quick question, because I see there's more to this paragraph. You talk about a trailer cover and trailer hitch. Is that related to the generator?
No, that's related to the trailer that's gonna be auctioned.
So then your request is, is that the, the trailer has already been approved as to be auctioned? Is that right?
Yeah. It's already been declared surplus. It's gonna be auctioned.
So that's already gonna happen?
Correct.
The cover and the hitch are already gonna go with it?
Yeah, I believe so. Yep.
And so the only request that you have right now is that we allow the police department to keep the generator and not sell it at auction?
Correct.
So I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So you're all set on the generator?
And the, actually, the, the budget amendment is actually on page 108. It's back in the, in the budget.
Page 100?
Yeah.
Page 108.
Yep.
Out of 16, back to 15.
Oh, it was also in the front.
Was it too? Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So item C is a disguise of false approval of the 2015 budget amendment request. Looks like we have staff here to present on that.
I did. So since I'm relatively new, I don't know, 45, 50 days in, I brought my two right hands to help out with the budget presentation here. These two have much more intimate insight into the budget than I do that I just came on to help get finalized here. I don't know if you want us to, to read through all the requests or how you want us to go about doing that. But, well, we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
So I have a quick question, Chief. I'm, I'm glad to see that you have thought ahead like this. Try to use these budgeted dollars to accomplish purchases that the department is in need of.
Yeah.
And the first thing on the list is a portable breath tester.
Yeah.
And one, one question that I always kinda had in my mind is, is would it change how many people drive under the influence if they knew before they left the bar that they were under the influence? And I know that in the past, bars have these like novelty breathalyzers. So they say, you know, put in a buck, we'll tell you what we think your alcohol content is. But you can't hold us to it, you know? Has there ever been a discussion or a thought of police officers sitting at a bar and just offering to give folks breathalyzers if they want before they leave the bar so that they can make a good choice as to whether or not they're gonna get in a car?
If you wanna give us about 10 more people, we can probably do that. But it would take a lot of time and resources for something like that to happen.
Or if the bar was to have a breathalyzer behind the bar that they could offer for patrons to use?
They could, but there'd be a lot of liability on their part there if something were to be wrong with that machine.
People would be calling, probably contraption.
Yeah. It would be, it would be difficult. I don't know if there's been any discussion on that. Not that I've ever heard of.
People can buy their own and do your own test.
Yeah. I think there's actually an app that you could get for your own. Yeah.
I know people that do that.
There's an app for everything, right?
I'm sure that my phone can tell what's on my breath.
But you could actually buy it.
You might as well just buy a Magic Eight Ball. Highly probable.
Okay. We'll come back to our budget amendment request here. And maybe if you wanna just hit the details on that for people who are watching.
May I just say something first? I, I think when, ever since Brian's been here, you know, with, with all the things that have happened in the police department, particularly evidence room, whenever Brian would say to me, "Mike, it would really help if we got this piece of equipment," I, I encourage him to do that as well as moving towards accreditation. So when we were having our budget meetings with, with the chief and Rudy and Jenny, you know, we were able to figure a way to, a lot of these items were on your 2016 list. We, we recognized that all the money had not been spent in 2015. That's why we decided to go this way.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah. Okay. A little background.
This is very well thought out and it's very well supported. And I'd make a motion to approve these purchases with the monies.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So that gets us, that before. So if you could just give us a quick explanation for people who are watching, so they know what's, what you're doing.
So basically, we had account balances in our 414 accounts for equipment and vehicle from 2015 to the total of 38, 38.39. So we- So we decided to ask for approval from the board to replace one PBT. We'd like to put a camera in the evidence room. Put audio recording in the holding cell. Right now, we can't use the holding cell until it's brought up to power. That'll take care of that. We also wanted to purchase four double-lock systems for drug filing cabinets and replace an evidence chest freezer. Lieutenant Pankoff can probably explain why we're adding the evidence items?
Yeah, so the four double-lock them, it looks good for accreditation and also it's recognized by IAPE, the International Systems, it's actually, I'm recycling old filing cabinets. And they're just gonna come in and install that bar system, the double-lock them. It looks good for accreditation and also it's recognized by IAPE, the International Association of Property and Evidence. I've now kind of attached myself to that organization. So the double-locking, we, we're trying to make steps towards it, but we're, you know, it's gonna cost money, so we're trying to take steps as we go. So drugs, money and cash, drugs and money will be this double-locking system. For cash, Lisa's helped us out with opening up a bank account, so that'll go there instead of being held in our evidence room. And then down the road, we're looking at coming up with some type of system for double-locking firearms. Right now, we have something, but as we move forward, obviously more guns will be seized, whether it's evidence found, property, safekeeping, and it'd be nice to have a better system. So that's, you know, projected in the future.
So keep in mind that for accreditation, a lot of things that are high-value items, items that can easily be manipulated, those cameras in their property rooms now, just for extra security. So a lot of these things that we're moving towards, especially in the evidence room, have to, things are required to be double-secured, to have extra security on. A lot of agencies are going with the cameras in their property rooms now, just for extra security. So a lot of these things that we're moving towards, especially in the evidence room, have to do with accreditation and really taking away those opportunities.
Are there questions or comments? Jerry?
Can you give me an example of what kind of evidence, I think you said the freezer is used for evidence?
Yes, so...
What kind of things need to be frozen?
Right, well, back when I started, you know, an example would be where we take in a large amount of evidence that needed to be frozen were for autopsies. So, and we have to hold on to that indefinitely. So we have some of that in there, but we also have, you know, like for example, if we sent something off to the crime lab and we needed DNA extracted from it, the crime lab not only sends back that piece of, that item of evidence, but they'll send back that DNA that they actually extracted, but you have to freeze it to keep it.
Okay, so you freeze DNA, okay.
Right, and the, what we're storing it in right now is, I would say, probably a seventies or eighties refrigerator freezer combo. So I have a small box freezer and it's literally stuffed in there and most of it's frozen in. I think it's just a matter of time before that unit goes out, so.
I didn't think about DNA, but that's a very good point. Who's gonna monitor this mobile data computer, the recording device that you're gonna have?
The camera in the evidence room?
Yeah, who's gonna be monitoring that? Is there, what's the procedure for that?
Sure, so that's actually monitored throughout the entire Police Department. So at any point, whether they're in the squad room and dispatch, or actually every officer's got it on their desktop to view at any point, they can watch that video of me or the other evidence property clerk in there. And it also records on a continual basis.
And that's the key, is it's being recorded. So if something were to happen, we have to go back and see what had happened.
So you normally, I mean, would you normally review the previous days or previous weeks' recording? Or not unless something comes up?
Not unless there's a discrepancy normally.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And all the way around too, it protects the officers from, from activities that they had nothing to do with.
Absolutely.
Accountability works both ways.
Yes, it does, yep.
I have a question on tasers. How often do they get used in the village or as a part of the department's duties?
Uh, we seem to go in, in kinda phases. We have used, we've deployed tasers on multiple occasions, I would say, in the last five years, what?
Handful of times.
Handful of times. But they get pulled often, you know, officers do pull them as a deterrent. We do that, see that very often with someone who's very physical, as soon as they see that taser's out and they're hearing those verbal commands to stop fighting or stop resisting, you know, I'm gonna deploy the taser. It's usually a really successful warning.
Okay. Do those get tested? Is there a way to test the tasers?
Yes, we test them, the officer tests them every time at the beginning of their shift, before they even put it in their holster and they need to make sure it's working.
How do they do that?
Yep, so they do a spark test, so there's an attachment.
We should have brought them.
No, that's okay.
So the unit, to be honest with you, kinda looks like a black, I would call it like a black squirt gun. It's just this kinda fat, plastic taser and there's this piece that you connect to it.
So is there a testing device?
Well, you take off the piece and you can test it and it'll show the spark. But once you put that piece back on, that's actually what shoots out. So the officer has to make sure that comes off and they can test it.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
And is there a weapons inventory?
For duty weapons or for evidence?
We have all, all of our items are inventory.
Yes.
Yep.
All right, I see you're gonna purchase some, a couple more glax.
Oh, that's in our equipment list.
You're, you're...
You're jumping ahead, jumping ahead.
My bad.
I knew he was wondering.
So look, where is he talking about tasers?
Okay, so back to the budget amendment. Are there any further questions or comments, anything else from staff? Okay, we have motion second to approve that two thousand and fifteen budget amendment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Thanks Rudy and Jenny, appreciate you being here. But item ten, which is the Police Budget, this is for Disguise and Possible Approval. I would remind viewers as well as the board that we go through each section to approve that. It comes back for a final approval in November, at our meeting on the third Monday of November, so. Police Department Pages twenty-two through twenty-three G. First item is reclassifying the Confidential Administrative Services Supervisor Position to Support Services Supervisor. This is coming from the Special October 5th Personnel, Public Safety and Protection Committee Meeting and they recommend approval three to nothing. So...
And that memo is in, on page twenty-three D, I got this right this time.
Is that? So can you repeat that? I'm reading it now. This was brought to the Personnel, Public Safety and Protection Committee, not the Board?
On October 5th.
And that committee recommended approval three to nothing?
Yeah.
Yep.
We've moved on to the Board, full Board tonight.
So the committee recommended, rather than bringing it last Monday night, I recommend and the committee did that, they brought it forward tonight's meeting for the budget discussion. It's a budget impact. I had a feeling that this, a couple of these items, when it came to the Board last Monday, you would have said, well, what's the budget impact? I thought, let's just wait and talk about it tonight. And including the, when we start about the, on officer cameras.
So any comments from the committee to bring forward tonight, anyone that was there? Or Chief Yule? No, don't go ahead, Chief, please.
I would just say that we talked about this at length and Chief Yule gave us a very good report on what Rudy is doing, all the things that she's doing versus her current job description and her current pay rate. And the committee felt that we wanted to reward Rudy for the good job that she's been doing and make sure that she is paid compensation is, meets, to actually what she's doing. So we, yeah, it was, it was a pretty, pretty easy vote actually to be over.
Thank you, and just to add on to that, part of the reclassification is not about, if I could just clarify, it's not necessarily about Rudy, it's about the position that she's, she's doing for us. You know, this was brought to me before I got on by the interim chief, Dale Burke, and started this process. And as, you know, in the short time that I've been here, obviously I've seen the work that her position encompasses with the Police Department, how much she is involved with the daily operations of the Police Department and how much those people in our department rely on what she is doing for us. And so in order to more, bring her in line with other people of that position, we thought that this was best for, for us. I mean, if we were to lose her, I would need to find someone of that same caliber to do this type of work. And to be able to do that, you know, I think the monetary has to be increased a little bit on her position. And like I said, I did reclassify the job description to encompass everything that her duties are, to give you a better idea of exactly what she's doing for the Police Department.
Thank you. So are there questions? We still need a motion, right?
Yes, and if this gets approved, this, I forgot to put on there, this will be effective January 1st, two thousand and sixteen.
Good. So we would...
Oh, so I make a motion to approve?
I'll second that. Thank you.
And I should clarify, in the memo, it's talked about two to three years, the recommendation would be over. It'd be over three years, consistent as we talked about at the committee level, when we did the sergeants a couple of years ago.
Okay, so it is over three years?
Over three years, effective one-one-sixteen, yep.
Okay. So are there questions?
My only question is, is Rudy's position a union or non-union position?
Non-union.
I would say I support this fully. I think it's fair to pay employees for what they're doing and Rudy is invaluable down there. I know when I walk in, she keeps me in line. Further questions? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you for everything you do, Rudy.
Now we're back to page twenty-two, which is the beginning of the Police Budget. And we do actually have one on page twenty-two, I mean, it's, so Brian's still under here, but the line item, Other Contractual Services, two ninety, if you, it's somewhat in the middle of the page.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that, it was, we budgeted forty-three thousand four hundred this year and we took it down to thirty-eight, but it actually has to go back up to forty-three thou, forty-three thousand, Rudy, on the, on the head, yeah. So we'll have to adjust that.
Okay.
So under the notes there, it said it includes the evidence, well, we didn't really include that there. Yeah.
Yeah, we included the note, but not the money, Brian, so what do you want, right?
I'll take the money.
Yeah, right, forget the note, yeah, so we'll have to adjust that.
Okay, so, does that take us to twenty-three A then?
I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep.
Anything else on those pages? So we're at twenty-three A then?
Yeah.
Can I have a quick question on twenty-two?
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about the gas oil expense to budget?
So Lisa and I, we decided, we were working on the budget this year, but we went back and looked at gas, gas and oil for the last couple of budgets. I'm just looking for my notes here, just one second here. So overall, we cut gas and oil for the, in the general fund, this is from eighty-eight thousand four hundred to seventy-five thousand. And, because we're only gonna, we're coming in probably, we're gonna save maybe twenty thousand dollars this year in gas oil, if not more. Now, some of it depends on what happens with snow and ice in November and December, but we thought that was a place that was trending down. We could, you know, we could be wrong and it could go up, but that's why you have contingency in the budget. We didn't think it made sense to keep budgeting contingency and also having the same line items for gas oil throughout the budget. So, the Board disagrees with that, you can certainly, you know, direct us to make a change on that.
So, so we've got a budgeted amount of twenty thousand. Just to get in the weeds for a minute, because I want to make sure I'm following what you're saying. But it doesn't look like we're gonna hit that number this year if everything stays trending the way it is, right? Because we're, it's October, so, that means we're ten-twelve sort of way through the year and my math isn't very good, but we won't hit twenty.
Well...
Jeff, you're a banker, you should have great math.
I got, I don't have my ten keys and I'm out of balance.
One second, let's figure this out here, twelve, is that, is that nine months?
Oh, so this is through September?
Yeah, it's probably, the projection is probably a little high, I agree, Jeff. It probably, probably maybe seventeen thousand. And, you know, over the weekend, they're saying gas prices are going up. So maybe we won't hit that twenty projected, that's probably true.
So then department goes to thirty-eight and then admin goes to thirty?
So we, we based the thirty on, again, going back, looking at the trend. If you look at the actual for fourteen, it was twenty-nine thousand four hundred and fourteen. So, I mean, it's truly, in some respects, I hate using the term like this, it's a guess. What's gonna happen with gas prices? You know, they're talking about things happen in the Middle East could raise gas prices and again, we made the decision that we have money and contingency to cover shortfall rather than budgeting another thirty-eight thousand dollars just in this line item. It may not, it may not hit that.
And to go up, so I understand you're comfortable with that and if you're comfortable, I'm comfortable. I just wanted to ask the question.
Yeah, that's a good question.
To go up to uniforms above that, another, another large difference between actual and projected and then department budget and under, and relative to the conversation, oh, wait a minute, I can't reference that. Are you sure about these numbers too? Are these comfortable numbers for you as well? The fact that we're trending below this year's projected budget, we're not gonna hit it? But then you bump up a little bit?
Because of the vest and the uniforms in the footnote there.
We actually probably will use almost all of our uniform account balance because we're gonna purchase those badges, which is about thirty-five hundred.
Oh, that's true.
And then we're also looking to hire two officers and fully get the uniforms for them. You're looking approximately three thousand officers, so that's an additional six.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Any other questions? So Mike, in this section, we haven't gone through the budget memo from Brian yet, right?
No, we haven't.
That's where we should go right now?
If you want to, sure.
So what are you thinking?
It's up to you, I mean, if the Board's right, I don't know, Brian, do you want to go through your memo or? It's up to the Board.
Or we can just see if anybody has questions on the memo?
Maybe just do that, because, I mean, items are in the budget, so, yeah. And that's...
Okay. So we have Brian's budget memo, twenty-three A, is there anyone have a question on that right now? Jerry had one earlier, but he was out of order, so we'll see now if we can answer it right.
I don't need to ask now, because I know the answer.
Okay, we can move on.
But I do want to thank you, Brian, for putting this together. This is always very helpful for me to kinda see the highlights.
I'd like to take credit for it, but really it was Rudy.
But you signed it, Brian?
I did sign it.
Okay, so that takes us to item ten B, Police Service in Town, page twenty-four.
And Lisa sort of touched on this during her revenue overview that we're not providing them, so.
That's gone. Okay. So then page twenty-five, the Police Building?
This is one of the items, if you go back to my overview, I said as their buildings are getting older, if you go down to repair and maintenance of buildings, you see that, as Board members have been around for a while, you know, our police building is a, is a unique building.
Mike, is that, is the HVAC working halfway decent now?
Well, we have to replace the chiller, so...
But the system itself is heating rooms that need to be heated?
We don't know, we don't know yet, but we'll find out.
We had to replace two of the circulating pumps in the last week, but other than that, everything seems to be functional.
It used to be really messed up though.
Yeah, it's definitely improved.
So it is, okay.
Yeah.
I think it's just that there's just a lot of maintenance on the building for whatever reason. And so we, we just had, we are just doing a more realistic number for next year. We increased it to twelve thousand two hundred, I think it's just, after a while, when you keep going back and looking at budgets, the line item keeps getting blown up, you just have to budget more realistically.
That was, I'm sorry, we called it eleven.
Or we sell it back, yeah.
It's a very nice looking building.
So is that all on Police Building?
That's as far as I had, yeah.
So we'll go to Pages twenty-seven through thirty-five, uniforms?
And this is the, this is the amount that's in the contract that we provide, it's just individual pages there.
Any questions there?
That seems low.
The uniforms, we actually increased, I believe, about five thousand for this upcoming year because we have five best replacements. The uniforms, we actually increased, I believe, about five thousand for this upcoming year, because we have five vest replacements.
How does that impact these two, uh, line items?
We're onto the individual, the four hundred and fifty per officer.
Who wants it in the con-
Oh, you're in the officers, you're not on the three forty-one, okay.
Oh, I was looking at three forty-one.
Oh, you were?
Yeah. Um, and I was just, it just seemed very low to me, I don't know, I just expected it to be higher than that, so what, what are you saying? Were you making a comment relative to three forty-one?
I was, yes, I just, the increase up to eighteen thousand is to cover five replacement vests.
So, so wait, let's, let's, I'm sorry, interrupt you, so, so you're talking about what's in the police budget, you're, and you're talking about the individual pages for the officers, Rudy, so we're talking about two different things.
No.
Oh, I got it, Coleman's not the name of the uniform company, it's the name of the officer.
It's a different one on the next page.
Do you guys ever think about going with one company?
Not fifteen companies.
Gilbert, Gilbertson, Schaub.
Okay, Jeff, get with it.
It's almost kickoff time, and I think inside I can feel-
Okay, are we all back to the same place now?
Yeah.
Page forty-two.
So now we're on page forty-two. Emergency government, that's not board meetings, that's something else.
That is Danecom, and I, I, this is our best guess, I-
Ding, the radio system.
Yes, yes.
It's gonna be operational twenty sixteen, November, twenty sixteen, I was told.
Dream on.
Yeah. Did you get my email?
I did. Thank you.
So in November twenty sixteen, we could probably reduce this down to what, about two thousand instead of nine, then, because it's-
I'm sure that's how it works.
Because it's only gonna be for one month of twenty sixteen.
It's gonna go up.
Okay, we're on to page forty-three, crossing guards. Any questions there? Then we go to page fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven?
Animal control. Any questions from crusties or comments from staff?
We haven't gotten to it.
Certain amount of activity in animal control.
Just depends on when we have to buy supplies, I think, yeah.
Probably not, there's only two hundred dollars in there.
Yeah.
We use it to buy dog food.
Dog food?
Yeah.
You don't have very many calls on that, do you?
Yeah. We, we take a fair amount of, you know, dogs that run away and we catch them, or they're found and turned over, or they're just vicious.
Anything else on that? Yes, item H, Police Special Revenue, that's Explorers Program, Community Policing, and Shop for the Cop, page seventy-seven.
We skip around here.
Isn't there that special funds now, not our general fund?
Um, I was really excited to see the Explorers out doing a fundraiser over the weekend, and I think that's, it speaks to their commitment.
Yeah, and they have a couple more too, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
You, you'll notice in this budget, we have the, the med drop box line item that Lisa created.
I didn't know what to throw in there for a budget, so I didn't budget anything, so we can work on that later for the final.
You got a question on this?
Go ahead.
Um, operating supplies for the community policing, is that, that program that residents took? Or is that something else?
You're thinking the Community Police Academy?
Academy.
So, community policing, um, that's an account where we get donations to cover the cost of the National Aid and Safety Camp and Safety Day.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, well, we're, I think a lot of things we're trying to do here is we're trying to keep all this money separate, so we're not co-mangling things and taking things out of things we shouldn't be taking it out, so that's, hence we're keeping these line items separate.
Any other questions on H?
Are there a lot of times where the, would you even know this, where the police department and the fire department both need their, um, their ranger at the same time? Or have you run into any instances where they've both been to flight at the same time?
Summerfest is a big event where we have it out, um, we use a lot, we use ours a lot for posting sign, signage, um, and, you know, to be honest with you, if we absolutely needed it, we could probably use it for an emergency out on the bike path, because it'd be easier to get back in there. But knock on wood, we haven't had anything to where both of us had, had to respond with our, our mules, so.
Probably the next flood?
Or the next flood, yeah.
Sorry?
Well, you were talking about the Explorers, now the post donations, now, when they got, when they were at Oskoche now for the fly-in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, that's, that's their own money, though, isn't it?
Part of it.
They can keep that for themselves, can't they?
That's only theirs, yes, yes.
But that, it comes into this account.
Right.
Right.
Oh, but it comes into this account.
Yeah, they earn it, but goes into the village budget for police explorers, yes.
To support their work.
Because I know we had taken a camper off there so they could stay in there, and I'm just, and that's a big event for them, and they make-
That is, yes.
Good money for that.
Yes.
Anything else on item H? Go to item I, Police K-9 Fund, page eighty. Any questions here, or comments from staff?
I think we finally have gotten this straightened out, right, Rudy, we're-
I think it works great now.
We're taking out of this and what's getting paid out of the general fund for the squad and stuff.
Yeah, it's been worked out great this year.
As Del Burke thinks, he was, he was not happy that it was getting broken out, so he really, he did it, we figured it out.
Okay. Okay, we'll go to item J, Police Equipment and Fund four fourteen, pages one hundred A through one oh two. This is from the Special Personnel Public Safety and Protection Committee. Last Monday, they approved it three to nothing, and purchasing on officer cameras.
So, yeah, so, so, um, there's, there's the equipment list, and then there's the, the memo that was in the packet for last Monday, and I did, I, I thanked Rudy when, um, the department submitted this, um, equipment list, because I thought it was really nice that under each item, um, she describes, you know, why we need it, I, I think every item is justified, and such a really nice job on it.
So when we buy these six portable radios, are they gonna, um, automatically interface with whatever Danecom is envisioned to look like when it comes out?
Well, they'll have to be, they'll have to be programmed, but the key is, is they're able to accept that program.
They have the capacity.
Right, yeah.
And can you tell me, um, I noticed in your memo that the officers trained with Glock thirties, or they carry Glock thirties, and one of the justifications for the Glock twenty-ones was if an officer's weapon needs to be serviced, that they'd have the ability to use one of the other Glocks in the interim? Can you tell me the difference between the two models and why you would purchase a Glock twenty-one instead of a Glock thirty, or am I misreading them?
No, one's bigger, one's bigger than the other, um, basically, like admin, we use the smaller ones, we don't need to carry around the big ones, basically, for that. Um, the officers carry around the bigger ones, uh, they had, they hold more ammo. You know, I think you have the smaller one too, right?
Yep.
I think maybe Detective Schaub has-
Yeah, they're a little less, yeah, and I believe our school resource officer has a smaller one too, they're just less intimidating and more for lower-key assignments.
The reason that we requested the purchase of two of them is because we actually have two of the thirties in-house right now, so if one of them went down, we could give them a replacement weapon, if anything happens to the twenty-ones, we have nothing.
So like supervisors right now don't have a backup except for to carry a Glock thirty?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And they're significantly different, for the thirties, they're extremely small on the hand, so for our taller, larger officers, it's, yeah, it's a difficult shoot for them.
Yeah.
And just a side note, um, when I came on board and realized that we were carrying forty-fives, um, I realized that that's a significant purchase in ammo. So one of the things we're looking at right now is determine what caliber we should, probably really should be carrying, as far as, um, the size of the weapon and the ammo that we're carrying as well. I'm putting together a study right now, I know these were recently purchased, um, so if we decide at some point we want to carry a nine millimeter or a forty caliber, we might end up trading some of these back in, um, it, it's a significant difference in the ammo cost for these weapons, or the ammunition's very, very big, so.
And, um, since I know you don't expend all of your ammunition before you have to replace it, what's the usable, like, the usable shelf life of ammunition? How often do you feel like you have to rotate through your stock?
Well, we try to rotate through yearly on our duty ammo, for sure. You know, the, the training ammo, that's not necessarily, that's every couple of years, but our duty ammo, we try to keep fresh and rotate through there. You know, and, and another significant issue with the, the weapons is that the smaller the caliber, normally, the easier it is to shoot, um, and, and the more ammunition you can carry in your weapon, so. One of the big things with nine millimeters, for example, is that the ballistics are just about the same as a forty, um, but you can shoot them a lot more accurately, and you can put more rounds there, so it helps you stop the threat a lot easier, so. Those are some of the things that we're looking at, just to give the board a precursor of what else might be out there.
Um, relative to the on-officer camera program, um, I noticed the budgeted items for buying body cameras. Are there any, are there any grant dollars available, or are you planning on pursuing any grant dollars for body cameras?
There were grant dollars available, they're not grant dollars anymore, I know Obama put that big, uh, uh, information out there about providing, I don't know how many millions of dollars it was for agencies to purchase that, that grant has been closed, so we missed that opportunity. TASER does give you a little bit of a discount if you're able to, um, equip your entire department, um, with cameras, which we're doing, so we're getting a little bit of a discount, but we're not Milwaukee Police Department, we're not buying eighteen hundred of them, so, um, it's not that significant for us, but there is a little bit out there for that.
It's interesting that, um, departments can't collaborate, like, through the International Chiefs of Police Association or something and buy wholesale from these vendors.
Yeah, well, the vendors, uh, you know, they, they do what they can, TASER's done a pretty good job of giving, uh, agencies some discount for, you know, if they equip their entire department, um, you know, other vendors out there, you know, they're, they're, uh, you know, they're out there to, to make money, obviously, so, you know, they're trying to do their best, but, you know, as far as this system goes, in my opinion, it's the best out there available for us, so that's why I recommend it, to do the TASER.
And our officers are on board?
They're on board, uh, a matter of fact, I just heard, uh, a story the other night about a rowdy crowd we had at the, the bars, and they wished they had the cameras with them, uh, just because of the things that they were saying and doing, so, yeah.
So again, you know, accountability works both ways, and when an officer has that camera, it takes a lot of the questions out of the courtroom in terms of what actually happened.
Yeah, there's, you know, I could go into a whole list of benefits, uh, for the officers and for the citizens alike, but, yeah, it does go both ways.
I'm glad that the officers are in support of it, I think it's gonna really, it's gonna help increase the transparency of the department, which is gonna help increase the public confidence.
Absolutely.
And, and the officer's confidence, hopefully.
Any other questions or comments?
Chief, are you and your staff happy with this budget?
Yeah, I think we are, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we are ready for the final part, which is approval.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, and that's items A through J. Actually, we did A already, I'm sorry, so it's B through J. Any further questions or comments on any of those items? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, please. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Good thorough job.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Thanks, Rudy and Jenny, nice to see you two here.
Yeah, come back anytime.
It's not usually this exciting, but. Okay, so we are on item eleven, which is pages twelve and thirteen.
You're back in the general fund.
We look at this one really close, don't we?
Absolutely. Why do we need four elections? That's probably the biggie was here.
Can't we get it done in one?
I, that's, that's the same question I asked you.
Yeah.
No, I think we're, we're gonna be, I think we're gonna have four, four elections.
I guarantee we will.
Yeah. And I'm seeing what other communities are, are budgeting, and I think, uh, the staff deserves some credit for being creative and realizing that, you know, the clerk's office will be spending some more time-
Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
In, in, uh, in elections, so we were able to move the money around and not have too much of a, too much of a dramatic impact on the budget, so, but it is gonna impact the budget.
How are we doing for volunteers for the elections? Is there, are we gonna have to take any special efforts to get enough, or do we have enough?
Um, we could always use more.
Hint, hint, Jerry?
Yeah.
You can work the books with me.
Work the books.
The whole books. That didn't sound right. At a budgeted whole books. So we could always use more. We could use Facebook to advertise now.
That's a great benefit.
We talked about doing some advertising at the senior center, and possibly at the high school as well.
On, uh, page thirteen, are these numbers right?
So, again-
Is what, is what happening, is, are you moving some of the salary?
Yep, that's what I was mentioning that, right. If you, if you look at, Jeff, if you look at page twelve-
Yeah.
You go from one ninety-four to one twenty-six, hundred ninety-four to hundred twenty-six from year to year. So that, basically, you're moving that money from there to, until, until elections next year.
Can you say that again? I'm still trying to find where you are on page twelve.
So, page, so on page twelve-
Yeah, what line item?
The sec- the second column, the current year-
Yeah.
You're at a hundred ninety-four thousand, so, yep, so then if you go to the end of the page, administrative budget, it, it goes down to a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So keep that in mind, you flip the page over, you've gone from seventeen thousand four ninety-six in elections in this year to a hundred and ten next year. So we're just moving the staffing around between the two. That's why in my overview, I can't remember what I said, is it, what's the impact again? Twenty, twenty, but it's still a twenty-five thousand dollar increase for the election budget, but we, but we were able to lessen it a little bit by moving some of the money from the clerk's office, because we're being realistic that that's what they're gonna be spending their time on next year.
Got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on the clerk's budget? If not, we need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Mike, can I vote on this?
Oh, good, good point, you shouldn't, yeah, good, good question.
Thanks, Eric. Okay, so we have a motion, second, to approve the clerk's budget, pages twelve and thirteen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and abstentions?
And so, Eric, what we should do is when we, when we approve the next one, when you abstain, at least on the, maybe we should do, maybe we should pull the accounting one out, because that would actually be the one that would apply when you're, it was good to, it was good to do that one, too. Yeah, yeah.
Pull one oh F, seven, twelve F?
Yeah, I think, yep, yep.
Anything else under twelve?
No, just two.
Okay.
No.
Okay, so we got item, item twelve, administrative section, we're on, back on page five.
Page five.
Jerry's? Sorry? Yeah, so, we just covered that.
Okay, we're on item twelve, A, Village Board, page five.
Thirty days.
We did not cut, we did not cut your salaries?
Right, yeah.
Those are managerial salaries. Any questions on page five? Page six, Municipal Court?
Judge provided another good budget, that does it every year.
Didn't change, didn't change the deli board at all, right?
No.
I'm just kidding.
Any questions on page six?
What's that?
And legal, oh, I'm sorry, I mean that.
No, go ahead, page six is six A.
So legal is, is, that's Matt's budget, the first one, and the second one is, is the one we do for prosecution.
Six.
That, the one on page eight, that, you know, that number can bounce up and down if we have a trial, um, we were-
Yeah, page numbers aren't right, six A is Beth's memo.
Seven, I think, is professional services, is that what you're referring to?
Oh, you're right, yeah, it is, well, just, just follow on the budget.
Yeah, page seven.
We went through, we must look down.
Yeah, no, that's, that's not good.
So item C, so you just say page seven?
Yeah.
I think that covers that.
So, um, I'm sorry, going back, so the first budget was legal on page seven is, is Matt's, the second one is for prosecution for the courts.
Okay.
Uh, page nine is, is mainly Kyle, uh, personnel, labor, attorney, work, and then recodification, if we do, uh, uh, an ordinance or something like that that would affect a municipal code, we sometimes will charge it to them. So, so that's legal.
Who does the prosecution?
Who, who does prosecution?
Yeah.
Durosh and Stevens, Tim Speer-Snyder, he's been doing it for probably twenty years for us.
So when we do our motion, just note that item C, legal, this page is seven, eight, nine, and ten.
Yeah.
Okay, so administrator, page eleven?
The, the one thing we did on my budget this year, and you'll see in just two, is that we actually are, uh, charging some of my time and more of Jeff's time to the two TIFs, we anticipate spending quite a bit of time in TIF three, which is the downtown TIF, and TIF four, which is a TIF out on the southeast corner, so I'm charging five percent of my time, which is, that's the footnote on there, so.
Okay.
It's probably low, but I, I think I'm, both those TIFs are struggling, so I think that's the most I want to charge at this point.
Okay. That takes us to item E, computers, page fourteen.
This is our contract mainly with Computer Magic, our computer consultant.
Okay. We're going to skip F and pull that out and do that when we're done with this section. Item G is assessor, page sixteen.
Just shows a reduced contract for our assessor, we're not doing, you know, all the work there.
Just going back to the computer, are you happy with the computer?
Computer Magic? Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I've heard some comments, that's, that's just my-
Oh, no, we've been happy with them.
Okay.
Assessor is, is accurate.
And we talked about them.
Yep.
Item eight, soda machine, page eighteen.
That would be going away because of machines, so.
Right. Item I, other general government, page nineteen.
So this is, this is the, the budget where we put everything that doesn't fit into a, a department. So for example, this is where we have, I mentioned in my overview, the salary studies in here. We have our employee system program in here, our, our dues, our appreciation lunch, we have our contingency in here and things like that.
Okay, any questions? Item J, illegal taxes. Suppose an interesting title.
I know.
So, so a quick question about item I nineteen.
Yep.
Reserve for contingency. I know you just used the word contingency, but did you meet it in this way?
Yep.
So can you give me some examples of, of what sorts of contingencies might come up?
If, if, if Lisa and I, Lisa and I, I'm, I'm wrong on our guess, our projection. Yeah, I mean, if, if we're wrong in the middle part of the year, something happens in the Middle East and gas spikes, this is where you would cover it.
So, and this is an operating budget?
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
So then this is the, this is an operating expense?
Yeah, I mean, sometimes we will go a year and not ever use this.
Yep.
And other times, well, there are times that we'd like have a bad snow plowing season, we may pull some money out of, out of this line item, Jeff. And then we'll, we'll come and do a budget amendment with the board.
And how do you get that number, just out of curiosity?
Uh, so, some respects, that is the, that is the number that we will use to, you know, we, we tried, we tried to have the, but the general fund qualify for the expenditure restraint payment, which is, you have to meet a, the, the general fund can only go up so much by state law. We're thinking it's two point-
Maybe two point five.
Two point five. And so, this is the number we'll, seriously, we'll sometimes go up a thousand or two thousand just to make, just to make sure we're at the top of that. And we've, we've had, we've gone from having fifteen thousand in there to twenty thousand in there. It's been a comfortable level since I've been here, that amount. So, but, yeah, but, but really, that's a good question. I mean, truly, if I'm wrong on the gas, well, that's, this is where we would cover it in different departments.
Thank you.
Yep.
So going back to, like, those in, impact fees now, where would, where did that all come, come, where did that all come?
The payment?
Yeah.
The, it came out of the impact fees.
Out of, out of the special revenue funds.
Yeah.
It's not in, it's not in operations.
That's not in-
Like, like the li-
For the library, the payment for the library, for the impact fees, that's in their special fund?
In two oh two.
It's not in their operating fund.
Okay.
This is truly just, this is truly, Jeff is saying, it's, it would cover an operation shortfall.
Anything else on illegal taxes? Item K, insurance, page twenty-one.
That, you know, we still haven't gotten, as we always, we always say this time of year, we don't have our final numbers, but this is Peggy and Lisa's best estimate at this point, so.
And item L, planner, page sixty-five.
That's Mike Slavney's work, our village planner.
Do you expect that that's going to go up a little bit as we get a little bit more involved in the central campus?
The san, that is actually in TIF three.
Okay.
That, we're charging at TIF three, and actually, if you, when you look in there, I put their contract in, and I show that, I'm hoping we have tasks one through three done, and we'll do four, five, and six next year. That's a TIF three expense.
And when you said if you look in there, what were you referring to?
It's in the, in the special funds, it's in the budget.
Okay.
And item M, general fund, transfer to other funds, page sixty-seven.
So this, as Lisa's footnote shows, this is money going into the equipment fund, into the sick leave fund, and then the transfer into the Westside Keller Alpine Park for the general fund's contribution for the purchase of the Damajew property. This would be the second of five years we'll be doing that, right? Or three?
I think this is the third, it's like the third year.
Third year of it, yeah. So tho, those are the transfers.
Any questions?
So we only have two more years to?
I, I think so.
Yeah, it's done in eighteen, it was from fifteen.
Was it eighteen?
It was from, yeah, we're done in eighteen.
Okay.
Is it like a mortgage kind of, in that sense?
Yeah.
Well, the, what the staff proposed was to actually use money from a, a number of sources, and we, we, we didn't want to borrow for it. And so this is a way of the general fund helping to pay for the purchase of the property.
Billy Jones, the property?
The prop, yeah, oh yeah, we own the property, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. But the, but the park fund, that, this Westside Park didn't have any money in it to buy it.
But then you sold the house.
Yep. Yep.
Any other questions? So that takes us to item N, which is possible consideration of agenda items A through M, not including F. So we need a motion to second, please?
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll go back to item F, which is accounting, and that's on page fifteen. Any comments here from staff?
This is for the audit, and Lisa and I are proposing to have elders update the five-year financial plan. We think that with all the upcoming projects, and Jeff kind of touched on it about, you know, the borrowing we keep talking about, we really make, we need to get our five-year financial plan updated.
Okay.
Oh, Jim Mann, come and do that next year.
Any questions or comments on this? It's page fifteen.
I'd move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We'll show, Eric has abstaining.
Yeah. Item thirteen is a reminder of our budget meetings at five thirty, the gathering at five, October nineteenth, October twenty-first. Before we go to item fourteen, again, a thank you to staff, and those not here for the job well done.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you.
Item fourteen, be a motion for adjournment.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.